Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the November 17th Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Looney, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
(inaudible) 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 Thank you.
Ms. Turley, will you take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Carroll?
Here.
Commissioner Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Fleming?
Here.
Commissioner Garretson?
Here.
Commissioner Jekyll?
Here.
Commissioner Rosler is absent. Commissioner Looney?
Here.
Student Commissioner Rudabush?
And Student Commissioner Acevedo?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners before you, are the minutes from the November 3rd meeting, are there any changes to be made, or is someone ready to make a motion? Commissioner Fleming?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
I would second.
Thank you. Commissioner Jekyll?
Thank you.
Commissioner Carroll? Same. Second, third, and fourth? All right. Please vote. Please let the record show that the minutes from the November 3rd meeting passed unanimously. Also let the record show that Commissioner Rosler is with us this evening.
My fault.
Oh. Not a problem. Okay. Mr. Conley, are there any agenda changes this evening?
No changes, Chairman.
Okay. First would be, is anyone here this evening that wishes to speak on an item that is not on this evening's agenda? If you were, you would still be required to fill out a speaker slip, but having none, then we will proceed. You do?
I do.
Perfect. If you will, before you leave, oh, thank you.
It's working its way toward you.
Thank you so much.
Very briefly, I think the student commissioners are a valuable portion of this Planning Commission team, and I would invite you to figure out a way that they could have a seat at the table when you have these meetings.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay. So, before us this evening, we have a early design review, and the purpose of the early design review is to give the Planning Commission and the public an opportunity to weigh in on concerns, comments, attaboys for projects that are coming before us. Going to change it up just a wee bit this evening, do things a little bit different. Staff will make a presentation. The Commission will have the opportunity at that time to ask questions. Hold your comments, but ask questions about anything in the staff report that may not be clear. Then the applicant will come up. The applicant will make a presentation. Same thing, we will ask questions and hold back on comments. We'll let the public weigh in with their comments, questions, and then we'll then come back and give comments, and then I think what I'd like to do as well is go right down the line like we've done before. Site design, are there any comments, questions with site design? And then, architecture, landscape, so that when staff and the applicant can review our comments, they're not looking at Kramer, this, this, and that. They're looking at landscape. Kramer said this, Rosler said that, and I think it may be more helpful. Okay? Okay. With that, Mr. Conley, will you get us started?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This is a early design review for the Wilmington Homes project at 1630 South Melrose Drive. The project site is shown in the overhead. It's a 3.14 acre site. It's currently occupied by a church. Surrounding land uses are another church to the north, multi- and single-family residential to the east, commercial retail center to the south, and various commercial uses, as long as, as well as a retail center across the street to the west on South Melrose. There are single-family homes adjacent to the church to the north and adjacent to the commercial center to the south, so within a general neighborhood area, but in a commercial zone. The driveway access to the site takes access from both Buena Vista Drive and South Melrose Drive. You can see the unnamed driveway there that serves the 7-Eleven and the Burger King property. That is the primary access to this property as well. Live Oak Road is located immediately east of the site, but no access is provided to the site from Live Oak. It all comes from South Melrose and Buena Vista Drive. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment and zone change on the property to amend the general plan and zoning to allow for a multifamily development. Staff brought this issue to the City Council on October 13th of this year and received majority support from the council on the proposed land use changes. For your reference, they're asking to change the general plan from rural residential, which allows one unit per acre, to mixed use, which allows up to 40 units per acre. And a zone change would change the current commercial C1 zoning designation, which allows primarily retail, service, and sales, to mixed use with a maximum of 20 units to the acre, which would be designated as MU20. The general plan and zoning on the property currently are shown here. The rural residential designation on the left is the general plan designation that's shown in gray. The red below is general commercial that accounts for retail and other commercial uses. The rural residential use covers the two churches. Churches are allowed in both commercial and residential zones, so there is a little bit of an inconsistency there in the current zoning, but because the church occupies a site with a special use permit, and churches are allowed in either zone, it's consistent. Zoning is shown on the right. It's all C1 commercial for the project site, as well as the surrounding uses. The proposed project would be a site development plan, a tentative subdivision map, and condominium housing permit to develop 50 condominium units on the site, proposed in 10 separate buildings. It would be three-story structures. The density proposed is approximately 16 units to the acre. That's 50 units divided by the 3.14 gross acre lot size. As I mentioned, they'd be three-story walk-up units with garages tucked under with a maximum height of 39 feet. Their proposal is for 33-bedroom units and 24-bedroom units. The site plan is shown here on the right of the overhead. This is also provided to you in the staff package. As I mentioned, the site's 3.14 acres, 10 buildings with a mix of four, five, and six units in a building, depending on the layout on the property. The parking was requested by the City Council to meet our citywide multifamily standards rather than the mixed-use zone standards. As you all know, the mixed-use zone was brought into play to account for development in the core downtown, more urban areas where transportation opportunities exist, and so the parking standards within the zone were set much lower than our citywide standards. The developer in this case is asking for the mixed-use zone to allow for the building height and density they're looking for, but the council felt because of the suburban location of the project site that the citywide parking standards that are higher would be more appropriate, which are on the realm of about three spaces per unit. Under the current proposal, they are meeting the citywide standards. 30 bedrooms at 2.5 spaces per unit, 75 spaces, 20 units that are four bedrooms at three per unit, that's 60 spaces, and then 50 units with a half a guest space per unit, initial 25. That accounts for 160 spaces, and that's what they're providing on the site. So the site plan complies with the mixed-use zone standards in terms of the building height and setbacks, but the parking standards are per the higher standard that's in the citywide zoning. There's also common area open space of about 28,000 throughout the site, but 13,000 is centrally located as an amenity area for the project. The conceptual building architecture was provided in your packet. It's a fairly contemporary flat-roofed design with some craftsman architectural features included, some covered entries, articulated walls, varying color palettes that are shown in the slides here. They provided some different color palettes for the Commission's consideration. This is a similar project that was built in a Los Angeles city that uses a similar design that was provided by the applicant for the general plan hearing that went to council, so to give you some idea of what it would look like if it was developed in real time. The building floor plans are all three stories, as I mentioned. Each unit would have a tuck-under two-car garage with a bedroom or den area on the ground floor, living space, kitchen, living room, family room on the second floor, and bedrooms on the third floor, and almost all of the units with a three or four bedroom kind of follow that general pattern. So, as the Chair mentioned this evening, we're looking for comments from the Commission on the design of the project, the architecture of the site plan, the landscaping, parking, any relevant comments that the applicant can take back and look at in designing the project. As I mentioned, the City Council majority supported the land use change, so that's not really up for discussion tonight, but of course, willing to hear any of the comments the Commission has. And that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Rosler.
John, could you explain the access to Live Oak Road? Why they have frontage, but they don't have access rights to it? How does that work?
There is a strip of property between Live Oak Road and the project site that's outside the right-of-way, and it belongs to the Association for the Shadow Ridge Community. So they would have to obtain rights to cross that portion of property to get out to the street.
There is a closure strip, then?
There is, and there's also a pretty significant grade differential there.
Right.
The fire department reviewed the plan and initially determined that secondary emergency access is not required, that the circular driveway that rotates through the site would be sufficient for fire access, so the only proposed access is through the driveway that serves Burger King and 7-Eleven.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Conley, how many of the parking spaces are ADD? ADD, that's not what I want.
Accessible parking spaces?
Yes, handy.
The code requires a specific number per, based on the overall number of spaces. I believe for 150 spaces, you need four or five, so it's right around that number. I don't know exactly the number off the top of my head.
Okay. Any other questions from staff? Commissioner Carroll?
Are there, Mr. Conley, are there any mechanisms that the city would typically put into place to ensure that the two garage spaces that are counting towards the parking requirement remain available for parking?
I believe the applicant puts deed restrictions on their units to require the parking, but we would include a condition, as we do for most multifamily projects now, because of the parking concerns, that they do two things. Number one, have some kind of an oversight, whether it's a homeowners' association or a condition on the project that requires parking within the garage, as well as a parking management plan to make sure that people that are using the gas spaces outside the garage spaces are appropriately parked for the project.
Okay, so that's conditioned typically on this type of project?
Our standard conditions at this point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jekyll, please.
Thank you. I've looked, and maybe I'm missing it, Mr. Conley, that on page two, you say that it will have 16 dwelling units per acre, but what is the allowable dwelling unit per acre for that zone?
So they're asking for a zone change, so they kind of set their own density.
Oh.
The current zoning is commercial, so it doesn't allow any residential.
Yes, it doesn't apply.
The MU zone goes up to 40 to the acre, so they're only asking for half of what you could ask for within that zone, which is 20 to the acre.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Fleming, please.
John, just on the follow-up on Commissioner Jekyll's, what is, do you know what the density across the street is in the apartments? As compared to what this would be?
It is an RM zone. The highest density in the RM zone is 21 units to the acre. I believe the project across the street is RM15, so it's right around 15 units to the acre.
Thank you.
Okay. Craig Morays, please.
My name is Craig Morays. I'm with Wilmington Residential. I'm here on behalf of Tony Arnest, who could not make it here tonight. First, I just want to thank you all for taking the time to do this early design review. It's something pretty unique to this city and something that I don't have a lot of experience with in other jurisdictions, so.
A little louder, please.
I'm very appreciative of this effort that you guys make to review projects early on in the process, so thank you very much. John did the overview here, pretty much hit everything. We're here, we're doing a zone change. We've worked very hard to achieve the site plan that you see before you here today. We've worked with staff doing an early design pre-application meeting. We also did the zone change study session with the council, and really feel that we've hit and achieved a site plan that takes into account all the considerations that were raised during those different meetings, so really appreciate any feedback that you have, and looking forward to continuing on with the process.
Okay. Let's see if we've got any questions for you. Commissioner Rosler.
My concern and comments will go to the amenities that you'll provide when you bring the project in and submit it. So I'm curious, every one of the bedrooms in the, all of the units has its own bathroom. What do you see as your target market for the sales of these units?
Target market as far as price or buyer profile?
Yeah, buyer profile.
Okay. The buyer profile would be younger families. We call this kind of early entry housing, so they'd be young families, young professionals, and that's basically the buyer profile.
Okay. My concern on this project and others that we've seen, you have a preponderance of the project going to three- and four-bedroom units, and young families, I can, I could understand. My concern is if you sell it to a couple, and they bring in three roommates, and the roommates have partners, we've got six adults, eight adults, living in the units, and the impact on parking and amenities. So that's kind of my concern, and if it is young families, the amenities that you come in with, I'm going to be looking for children's play equipment, a yard or a field that they can kick a ball around in, so paying attention to those types of concerns. Okay? And then, on your site plan, can you tell me what a six-foot geofabric wall is?
Yeah, so it's, it's got lots of different names. Sometimes it's called an MSE wall, but it's basically a plantable wall.
Ah.
So if you've ever seen a wall that has different cells in it, and it's got planting, and eventually it all becomes green, so that's what that is.
First time I'd seen that term, so. That was it, Madam Chairman, for my questions right now.
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, please. Questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question about parking. Specifically, the parking spots along Live Oak. Is there going to be, first of all, anything that's going to kind of protect the people from Live Oak, just saying the underside of cars, because that's quite a bit higher than Live Oak? Is there going to be a fence there that will kind of hide that?
Yeah, so what we had in mind is we have that geofabric wall, which is that plantable wall, and then on top of that wall will be a fence for fall protection and for security. We envisioned like a tubular steel-type fence, but we can do any kind of fence application that, you know, we deem necessary with staff and with the Commission as we move through the process, but that's what we envisioned, is just a tubular steel fence, something that you can see through at the top of that wall.
But, so the people going along Live Oak would see the bottom of cars?
Not necessarily, because you have a, so from the, you're talking about from the sidewalk? It's like if you were walking down the sidewalk.
Walking down Live Oak.
Yeah. Well, you do have a pretty substantial slope there, and then you're going to have the wall, and then you're going to have a landscape buffer zone, and then the car. So I don't know if you'll necessarily see the bottom of cars.
The second question relates to the same parking area. I noticed you have sidewalks where people can walk around safely from the cars in the parking lot, except for that area. There seems to be no sidewalks over there, so anybody that's walking from, let's say, the far side to the other side is, I think, in a safe condition with cars backing out, whereas the others at least have sidewalks where you can get from a car to a sidewalk to get to your apartment or your condo. See what I mean? There are no sidewalks on the Live Oak side of this property.
Got it.
Whereas there are sidewalks all around the rest of it.
So you're just, what you're talking about is just a connection between all the sidewalks?
Yeah, something that would make it safer for people to walk along there once they park their car, because you have those internal and the ones on the green belt for all the other areas, but that area has no sidewalks.
It's definitely something we can look at. I mean, we, like I said, we do have that buffer area between the front of the stalls and the top of the wall, so we can look into putting in some sidewalks there to create some circulation.
Questions?
Thank you. Continuing from Commissioner Rosler's concerns about several couples or families living in one unit, I'm wondering about the bedroom on the first floor. Could that be turned into a totally separate apartment?
We do have, I believe it's 20 units that can be four bedrooms, and that means the bedroom on the very first floor has its own bathroom, but I don't envision that becoming its own apartment in the sense that it's really just a bedroom and a bathroom. And as I touched on before, we really feel there is a market for younger families and younger professionals at this price point, and that possibly work in Carlsbad and is looking for something in this product type for this product price range. So we do feel like there's a market for that, and we don't feel like it's going to be the type of market or the type of product that's going to be shared, in the sense that you're talking about, as far as grouping different families and really crowding the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Fleming, do you have questions for the applicant?
Thank you. The other day while I was out there sitting pretty much in the middle of this, looking around, it looks very, very small to put that many units on, in my opinion. So I'm concerned about the density that you're asking to be put there, for one thing. And I want you to, I'd like for you to consider that, along with the idea that from Live Oak, as you look up that hill, you're going to be looking quite a ways up the hill before you get to the buildings, and then another three stories there. So that is going to be, the other three sides are not that bad, in my opinion, but that one side, I'm quite concerned about it. There's trees on that Live Oak part. Are they going to still be there to help buffer that look, or what are you going to do with those trees?
Well, first thing, from the right-of-way to the first building, we have almost 80 feet of setback, so that will temper the height of some of those buildings as you're driving up Live Oak, as far as what you see. One thing that we will also do as we move through the process to help everyone understand what the visual impacts are going to be, is we're going to put together some visual perspectives for what we, what the buildings are going to look like as you drive up Live Oak or at certain points on Live Oak, so you can get a real feel of what the impact is going to be.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Rosler, please. Questions for the applicant?
The closure strip that's between your property and Live Oak that's owned by the homeowners' association for the Shadow Ridge Ranch?
Shadow Ridge, yeah.
Okay. It's landscaped, and they maintain that landscaping, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I think that'll go a long way to buffering the visual impacts along there. Cross-sections through here, this Commission's pretty savvy, so I think we would understand cross-sections going through the property, so I would encourage you, as part of your application, to include those.
Okay. Right. And I'm sorry, to touch on that, we would provide enhanced landscaping or mature trees to also break up that visual impact as well, anything we can do from a landscaping perspective.
Commissioner Jekyll, please.
Just a couple of other things. Overall, just me, this feels very dense, and I am sure you've planned it to make it affordable for you to build and affordable for people to buy, but it just seems very I'm a little puzzled. It seems as though the garage doors are going to have, be the thing that you really see when you drive in there. How, if I have a visitor coming to see me, how does that visitor know where I am?
As far as where your unit is?
Uh huh.
Well, most communities like this are set up with signage, so different wave-finding plans, so when you enter the community, it's easily notated which direction you need to go to reach the unit that you're going to. So there's signage and wave-finding plans throughout the community that help steer you to the unit you're trying to get to.
So as the visitor is driving in to find a parking place, there will be some signage to say, "Units number X and Y over here," that sort of thing? Okay. Then, on the elevations of the side view of the buildings, even though they have windows in them, they seem kind of blank.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have the elevations in front of me, so I apologize.
Well, I don't either, but.
So you mean the windows themselves look blank, or they just don't look?
No, there's just not any kind of architectural detail on the side, sides of the buildings that are visible.
Sure. Well, again, these are conceptual in nature, early on in the process, so that's something that, but take that under consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Looney, do we have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Looney, do we have questions for the applicant?
Is this the time where we're going to be looking at design specifics, or is just?
No, just questions about what you've seen so far.
Yes, I have several questions on both site design and architecture.
Okay.
I'm going to start with the site, with the site design. Again, all my questions are based upon the design policy that the city has established, and they're very specific on what they are expecting to see in not only a final application, but also the preliminary design, which we're doing right now. Under the site design, you've got a piece of property that you've maximized the number of living units, and it really lends itself to a site design that's more of a commercial or industrial layout. You've got long driveways. Along the north edge, you've got a driveway that's 400 feet in length, and it's straight. There's no variations to that. On the south side, you've got a driveway that has a length of greater than 300 feet that is perfectly straight. In our design guidelines, we ask that the applicant promote a variation of drives and angles, and the same thing with the buildings. We've got 360-some feet of building along that north edge that's all in the same wall plane. That has me some, has some concerns. You've got buildings that are 39 feet in height, and in one location, the buildings are 10 feet apart. The average distance between the two buildings are 12 feet. Proportionally, that's going to create, I think, a problematic residential neighborhood because of your massing. One of the other issues that are, one of the other items in our site design is the perimeter parking is discouraged, and this is exactly what is being proposed, is perimeter parking. I know this is the most efficient, but we want something a little bit more appeasing architecturally in the projects that are being approved. If you take the development to the east across Live Oak, we've got several two-story structures. Some of them are clustered in two, three, and four different dwelling units. You've got a lot of green space between those dwelling units in front, in back, and in the side. So what they've done to the east is they've created a sense of community. They've created a sense of green belts that we don't see in the proposed site plan. We do have an open space area in the very center, but it's somewhat, if I could use the word, canyon-like, because you've got almost 40-foot tall buildings on either side and on the ends. Architecturally, again, one of the guidelines state that the buildings need to be detailed, articulate, and consistent on all sides of the structure. I don't see that in what has been proposed. We do have some minor offsets in the structure, but there's six inches and nine inches and an occasional 12-inch offset. When you've got buildings that are almost 40 feet tall, and in some cases, 150 feet in length, the six and nine-inch and 12-inch offsets just don't cut it. The roof lines, they vary by six inches in the center, 18 inches on the end, and three feet in the center. Again, when we're looking at a 40-foot or 39-foot high building, those aren't going to be noticeable, the variation in heights. You've got minimal balconies, and they're only open on one side, so they're going to be dark. If they have south exposure, those are going to be the better units, but those balconies, again, can become somewhat dark and enclosed in. As a guest, and this is something that you brought up, if I drive into the property, I really am going to have a difficult time trying to find the front door the first time that I visit, because I've got to drive in, park, and then I've got to go to the side, either the north or the east, or north or south side, if I can find the sidewalk to get to the front door of a unit that I'm visiting. So I think access needs to be addressed a little better. Recommendations, I'd like to see a new site design, something that has better building placement, better driveways. I'd like to see some open space areas with better amenities. There's no pool, there's no rec area, there's no play area for the kids, and then we need to do something with the articulation of roofs, the offset of roofs, because there is none. We've got a two-foot overhang at the front door, which is minimal, and we just, we need to see something a little bit more creative and a little bit more of a rural setting for this piece of property. So, I know I've hit you with a bunch of stuff, but again, I'm just going off of office or off the design guidelines that have been adopted by the city, and I think, I'm not opposed to a project on this parcel, it just needs to be articulated in a different manner.
Well, I appreciate the feedback.
Commissioner Garretson, do you have a question? We're not at the comments, a question.
Yes, I have a question.
Thank you.
If I'm standing at the corner of Melrose and Live Oak, and I'm looking at the shopping center, I see basically two stories. And then if I look beyond that to this development, I see three more. So from Melrose, I'm seeing a five, five stories building. My question is, are you going to somehow put enough landscaping in there to where that doesn't look from Melrose like this is the center of the universe with five stories?
To answer your question, yes, we would install landscaping that we feel, and that staff feels and that the commission feels is necessary to provide screening or some kind of variation in the elevational view from that perspective. Internally, during our analysis and looking at how we feel this project is going to look from the different angles at the corner of Live Oak and Melrose and Buena Vista and Melrose, and even down here from the school parking lot, from the top of Live Oak, we feel like because of the site design that we've put together, that those views will be minimal, and we feel that through our cross-sections and perspective views that we can provide, that we feel like those concerns will be addressed.
There's a three-story complex on Melrose, south of Shadow Ridge, that is three stories, but the way they've placed it with trees and the way they've placed it on the side of the hill, it doesn't give you the feeling of overpowering, whereas I get the feeling this might be, so that's my concern, but we'll get to that later.
Cliff Kaiser, you want to come up and address any questions that you may have?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm sorry, I don't have questions per se, but just a couple of comments, because I can stay till the end.
Okay.
I really think that it would be nice to have a access to Live Oak here to help distribute the traffic entering and leaving the community, because although the plan has 160 spaces, realistically, I think we're talking about 200 or 300 cars going in and out of that location every morning and back in in the evening. And so if you were to disperse that between the published entryway and exitway, and then also on Live Oak, you could keep the south traffic going out Live Oak and the north traffic going out the published way. Of course, that would require dialogue with the Shadow Ridge community to make that happen. And on the lines of parking, I agree with the comments that some of you have made, that 160 seems awfully low. You know, anytime you have apartments or condominiums, you know, every bedroom turns into two cars, and instead of 160 spaces, you're upwards of 200 or 300 spaces, especially when you talk about the four-bedroom units. And then, of course, I'd be very interested, as we move this project forward, seeing the traffic on South Melrose there. That's already a concern now. We already have a lot of high-density units there, and putting another 200 or 300 cars going to and from work and school every morning and in the evening, that's going to create a big, big challenge there. And I appreciate Mr. Looney's comments on architecture. Oh, man, those are right on board here. We need to make a unit or a complex that blends in with the community, is very aesthetic, driving down Melrose and Live Oak. And I would differ a little bit with Mr. Garretson in that I don't mind something that's standing out and prominent, because you want. If it's on a hill, let's have a view and look over the valleys that are surrounded, but let's make it look majestic so that the community can say, hey, that's a great place to look at as we're driving by. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaiser. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make comments? Student commissioners, anything you'd like to add or ask? Okay, seeing none. Okay. Commissioners, first, I'd like to address the site design. We'll do that one first. And Commissioner Jackal, can we start at your end this evening, and do you have any comments or that you would like to make regarding the site design?
Well, I agree a million percent with Commissioner Looney's points of view. This feels dense and rigid to me, and not as though it would be a pleasant place to live.
Commissioner Rossler?
I can understand the site design. It's pretty efficient for the site. It's almost square, and so the streets and the buildings fit in. I think Commissioner Looney raises a good point. I think there's a way to reorient some of the buildings, to have them front on Live Oak instead of parking spaces. That, I think that would produce a better site design. I've got other questions on landscaping and...
We'll get to those.
We'll get to those later. Okay, those are my questions.
My comments on the site design is it seems to be, to feel too much. I have the feeling that these are like skyscrapers, and it's, even though we'll eventually have full-size trees, that the buildings are going to be much higher. So I would like to see the density reduced by a story and make them two stories, and I will have comments when we get to parking and the others as well.
Commissioner Carroll, please. Site design comments?
I don't have any new comments, other than the great comments Commissioner Looney brought up. And I think, yeah, there's missed opportunity for some additional staggering and offsetting of the buildings, not just within each unit, grouping of units, but also within the placement of each structure.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleming?
As most of you have said, I kind of agree with most of the comments that's been made, and I definitely appreciate Commissioner Looney's deep looking at this. This looks very boxy to me, as you just look at it, even up on the hill, it looks very, you know, when you're standing there, it looks very boxy. I'm just afraid that the canyons that were spoke of are going to really look that way, especially when you're in that passive, open area. And I would love to see it a lot more country design, more, more like the neighboring area to kind of fit in a little bit better, a little bit more comforting. This, it's a pretty design, and it's, but I just don't think it fits right there, so that's what I got.
Commissioner Looney?
I want to apologize to the board for misspeaking out of time or out of sequence, but I have no other comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, please?
Yeah, I think it's too sterile. You know, it's the long driveways and, you know, the buildings next to each other with no variation. I don't think it would fit in this, this community very well.
Okay, next, we will make comments on the architecture. Commissioner Jackal?
Well, again, amen to Commissioner Looney's points. I am concerned about the blank sidewalls. Well, Commissioner Looney has said it all. Thank you.
Commissioner Rossler, please.
Usually, flat roofs are kind of reserved for urban settings, and I think this part of Vista and South Melrose and Shadow Ridge are more suburban, so I would like to see something done with the roof line. May have to increase the height that they're asking for if we, if they go for a pitched roof on it, so, but that's a concern. I think Commissioner Jackal raises an excellent point on the side elevations. They should have the same detail as the front elevations as far as material, color, offsets, and then the, again, on the driveways going down with the garages, that elevation should have the same attention to detail as the, as the front elevation. I don't have a problem with the three stories. I don't have a problem with the townhouse design, but just those comments on the architecture.
I have no other comments on architecture. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. As far as grouping four to six units together, I think that's, that's fine. I don't have any issues with that. I'm not dead-set against the flat roofs for this area. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fleming, architecture?
I think, go along with what most everybody else said.
Commissioner Looney, please.
No additional comments.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
No additional comments.
Thank you. Landscape. Commissioner Jackal?
Is this a place for amenities also, or do you want that another time?
No, that was good.
Okay. The, having all that open space just in one place, again, I don't know who would use it, and there need to be more kind of welcoming areas that people might want to gather in and kids play and that sort of thing. Just, just one piece of open space doesn't do it, and I will look forward to seeing the landscaping plan.
Commissioner Rossler?
A little concerned about the amount of private usable open space. As was pointed out earlier by Commissioner Looney, there's just one balcony, and it's enclosed on three sides, so it's going to be rather dark. With these type of units, the townhouse units, there's an opportunity for a patio by the front door, and that would give them some outdoor, private usable open space for, right outside their front door. So I, I think that's... So, I, I think that's, that would be important. Again, I think the amenity package that they put together, whether there's going to be a clubhouse and a pool and those types of facilities and a manager's office, we haven't seen that on the site plan. There's room for it. The amenity package needs to address the people that are going to be living there. If they're, I think there'll probably be young families. And if there are, then I'm, I'm going to be looking for children's play equipment, an area that they can throw, throw the ball around in. The one other project further up on North Santa Fe that, that we gave a significant hard time to, they had an interior courtyard like this with a great series of amenities. I think there was a community garden, there was a pool, there was a bocce ball court. So, there were, there were things that I thought were good additions to the project. So, I'm going to be looking for something like that in the, in the landscaping plan.
I have no additional comments. Landscape and amenities. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I think this buffer that exists on Live Oak is going to be sufficient to, no matter if, if the parking remains, if that portion of the parking remains along the outside of the project, or, or if it, things get shifted around to where a building is a little bit closer to that east property line. I think that existing landscaping and change of elevation there is, is going to be sufficient for the project. And same with the existing landscaping and slope on the south. So, I don't, I'm not too concerned about, about those two areas.
Commissioner Fleming?
I agree that as far as the, what you were saying about the patios a while ago, that there's a possible, a way that you could maybe get those, use a patio to help give each place its own little private area. And then, at the same time, you could have the amenities. And we will be looking definitely at those, what you're going to be providing in that respect. I, but again, I just, I think there, there should be more, as Mr. Looney said a while ago, room between some of these buildings. I mean, they're very close together, too. So, if, just to rearrange it a little bit so it looks, it's, it's a little bit more of an in-and-out flowing of things. So, thank you.
Commissioner Looney?
Got a couple items, particularly on this land, six-foot-high landscape wall on Live Oak and also on the property to the south. We've got a steep slope that comes off of Live Oak and then we've got the six-foot-high wall. And so, we're really depending upon Shadow Ridge, common area, to provide screening for that retaining wall. If for some reason Shadow Ridge defaults in their maintenance, we're ending up with this six-foot wall that may or may not be a good thing. It may be worth considering repositioning that six-foot wall a few feet off that easement line or that right-of-way, where the applicant can actually provide some of their own landscape screening in front of that crib wall or in front of that retaining wall. I'm not so concerned about it to the south because it is a strip retail, but we have pretty much the same condition, where we're looking up slope and then we see a six-foot-high wall. And so, it may or may not become an issue, but if the Live Oak strip is not maintained, then we do have an exposed six-foot wall. That's my only concern.
Good comments. Thank you. Commissioner Garrettson, please.
I, I would have a concern about the landscaping. Again, I am concerned about at that corner of Live Oak and Melrose because that's where the traffic comes north and south. And if you look up, you're saying five stories. So, I would be concerned about the landscaping on that side, whether there's going to be sufficient landscaping to allow this to not appear to be just two stories at the strip mall and then three more stories. That could be just a massive structure in appearance. So, I'd be really concerned about that. The other thing is the amenities, because you're, the closest place for kids to, to go to play would be one of us to Park or Breeze Hill or Lake. And they're all very far away. So, I'd be really concerned about, you know, the amenities for the people who live in this, this complex.
Commissioner Rossler?
Sorry, I missed one comment. John, if you, could we see the site plan back on the, down in the southwest corner of the property? The sidewalk just ends in front of the units. I think the, and throughout the site, the pedestrian circulation system needs to interconnect. There are a couple of other places where it could be extended to provide better pet access. So, sorry, I missed that.
And I have one other comment, having to do with amenities. And that is, we talked about possibility of adding a picnic area, barbecue area, something like that. Consider doing that close to the Burger King. You're going to get the benefit of, because I was there late this afternoon. Smelled delicious. Commissioner Fleming?
Just real quick, in response to Commissioner Garrettson's comment about the Live Oak and Melrose, if you're on that corner looking up, I don't think you're going to have a problem with that because there's a, if I'm not mistaken, a bank that sits right on that corner, which you've got to look over. There's something on that corner there, but you'd have to look over that before you could see up there. So, I, I just thought of that.
Actually, if you're standing at that corner, you're going to see the strip mall. There are some trees back there, but this, this, where the sidewalk or where the parking is, is at the level of the top of that strip mall. So, everything that, all the altitude from this building is going to be above the strip mall when you're on the, on Melrose. So, you're going to see the whole thing unless there's landscape there.
Okay, now, let's proceed to parking. Commissioner Jackal?
Okay, I, I too am worried about, are there enough spaces? And... There's no, no way really to make parking beautiful, but I wonder if we're going to be sort of rearranging the structures, if there's some way to tuck parking among it so it's, we don't just have these long stretches.
Commissioner Rossler?
Yeah, my concern is the people that are going to be living here and the number of cars that they'll be generating. So, I know we can't do it, but I'm going to be interested to see from the applicant how he's going to control through the CCNRs who lives in these units. And I'm going to be looking for something that, you know, only one family can live here and, and how that's controlled and regulated. So...
My comments related to parking is, I understand, I heard from the applicant, that he's picturing this as a complex for young families. And I guess I, my vision of a young family are children who don't drive. So, I would think that the parking could, is probably sufficient, but I know that that's not going to happen. And my feeling is that a four-bedroom apartment is going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of six to eight cars with only provisions of two-plus to be accounted for. And then, my other comment related to parking is, I would really like to see the ADA-required spaces be not included in the total we see here of the 160, because if there are four to five spaces that are ADA, that means that our total spaces is 155. And if we don't have any ADA people living in the complex, we've lost parking. So, I would like to see them separated. That's all my comments. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm also concerned about the parking. On one hand, I'm, I'm glad that, you know, the city council's already given some feedback and, and direction to not just stick with the mixed-use standard. But, yeah, I think it's borderline. I'm, there's going to be a certain percentage of these units that have more than, than the designed amount of parking. And it's just going to, you know, be like almost every condominium project I've ever visited and there's nowhere to park. So, it's very rare to roll up on a condo project and have it have adequate parking. And I'd, I'd like us to try to be a city that has good projects.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleming, please.
When you were referring to young families and you talked about, you know, that they would possibly be below driving age, at the location you're looking at there, I look for a young family to have teenagers that are going to go to, be going to Rancho Buena Vista High School. A family that would be a perfect prime location for somebody who's got a, a student that wants to go there. You get a teenager, a little 16, 18 years, 17 years old, they're going to want a car. And it's, sometimes, you know, it could be a problem in that respect. I would like to see a little less density or a little more parking spots. That's, I, I think what you've got with the number of, of units and the number of parking spots is just not adequate right now. I'd like to see a movement one way or the other to make that more amicable.
Commissioner Looney, please.
Again, on parking and drive, I think it would be good to look at a sense of entry as we come onto the property. Right now, we're coming off of a private drive, going into another private drive, you know, as is indicated on the, the west side under neighborhood entry. But if we had some site, some sense of entry into the development, I think that would really enhance the pride of homeownership and it would also begin to give a sense of arrival into, onto the land. Maybe to have a lot of those guest parking spaces right there at that entryway and then through the series of pathways that meander around the parking and the drive. I think that would make for a stronger project.
Good comments. Commissioner Garrettson, please.
What does that mean, private road? Who owns that road?
You're referring to the access road?
Yes.
It's owned by the three parcels that use it, the 7-Eleven, the Burger King, and this parcel.
And this parcel. Okay.
Share maintenance of it through an existing maintenance agreement.
Okay. As far as parking, my main concern would be just, you know, you've got 30 spots along Live Oak. You know, somehow to break that up to where it's not so, so sterile.
Okay, next, that, we, we didn't discuss lighting. We didn't see anything. Is there any concerns about lighting that, or potential concerns that may help the applicant in his design? Commissioner Jackal?
Sorry, I hadn't even thought about that. Well, I'm hoping that, that this will be regrouped so that it, it won't be like walking down these long, long stretches. But there, there obviously needs to be enough lighting that people can walk around feeling safe.
Okay.
And obviously, each house would need to have a light.
Commissioner Rossler?
Yes, I, I agree with Commissioner Jackal. The pedestrian circulation has to be lit at night for safety, not only for wayfinding, but for security. So, and then, the other concern is, but it can't shine off, off-site. You're going to be elevated, so that, that's kind of a struggle. So, we'll be interested to see how that comes out. Sorry.
I have no comments. Commissioner Carroll?
No comments on lighting.
Commissioner Fleming?
No additional comment.
Commissioner Looney?
A couple of comments. Along the south property line, we're going to get a lot of spillover from the commercial structures. So, we've got a lot of evening light on the south side. On the north side, we have just the opposite issue where there's probably very little or no lighting coming in from adjacent properties. On the east, we rarely have minimal. We've got some streetlights. And then, on the west, again, we're going to have a lot of commercial lighting. I think the only issue that we need to be aware of, as was previously mentioned, is that we get some pedestrian lights for pathway walks and security lighting. But we've got such a varying light levels on this property that it's, it's going to be hard to shield some of those dwelling units along that south line from the lights that are going to be on all night long. So, that's the only comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Garrettson, please.
Uh, no comments on lighting.
Okay. Next will be safety, then I'll go to any general comments. And then, is there anything from my little laundry list that we should add for this project or future projects? So, safety, Commissioner Jackal?
I don't have anything other than what I said.
Commissioner Rossler?
I don't have any comments on...
I have none myself. Commissioner Carroll?
Pass.
Commissioner Fleming?
Nothing, right now.
Commissioner Looney?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Just to reiterate about the sidewalks, that's a real safety concern for me and having the driveway so straight that I'd be concerned about speed. And especially, no sidewalks and a long, straight driveway where they could potentially speed, that would be a major safety concern.
Good comment. Commissioner Jackal, any general comments about the project?
No, I think there's potential for a nice project, but I, I really hope we see something better.
Thank you. Commissioner Rossler?
Yes, I'm okay with the, the general plan amendment and zone change. It's sandwiched in between multifamily and, and commercial, so I'm, I'm okay with, with doing the residential project here. The density isn't, to my mind, a concern. I'm, my concerns have been expressed about the architecture and the design.
My comment is, I think this is a lovely piece of property. I was amazed when I walked the property lines and the views that were available. But as I had said before, I'm a little concerned about the height and what effects that that will have on the neighborhood, that this will be too visible. It'll just stick out and it won't blend in. Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Conley, on this zone change to mixed-use with the maximum 40 dwelling units per acre, it's application-specific, I'm assuming, whereas if we were to approve the, if, if the zone change was to be approved, and this is 16 units per acre, if we could, this project could go away and then we could come back with an even more dense project after we've approved, after 40 dwelling units per acre has been approved. That's true. You could make, we could make the zoning 16 units to the acre and exactly meet the density that's proposed. That would be the best option to minimize future density if this project weren't built. Okay, yeah, because I know, you know, projects, a lot of projects get designed, many more projects get designed than, than get built. So, I think that would be something we'd want to consider.
That's a very good comment. Commissioner Fleming?
I am in favor of the, of something going on that property right there, I think, of like this. I think we need to take the directions that we've given and without reiterating the whole thing again. I'm concerned, the safety, the lights, and all those are things that will... will come back with the new proposal that we can look at, too. So, I'm, I'm excited about what, what's to come.
Commissioner Looney?
I'm in agreement, you know, with the proposed project as far as residential use. I think to limit the density is a great idea. That way, we've got, we're not having to re-deal or deal again with a denser project that might come up later on.
Very good. Commissioner Garrettson?
No further comments.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to add to the list that we need to discuss, either specifically for this project or for future design reviews that I consider? Commissioner Fleming?
Chairman, I just want to thank you for putting that list together to start with. And I don't know of anything else that would fall on there, but I think you've done an excellent job. And as we've, are, just started this process of early review, I think this is a major step that you've taken to minimize the hours that, to go through this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, I'd like to see amenities handled separately.
Okay.
Because, you know, when you have something this big and you have that far to go before they can get to a park or any recreation area, I like to see that hap, be a separate discussion.
You got it. Okay. Mr. Conley, did we answer, oop, Commissioner Rossler?
I'm sorry. I was just going back through the, the neighborhood comments that we had received. And Don Wilson had a two-page letter and traffic was one of his major concerns. So, I'm going to be interested in how that private drive, dry boy works carrying traffic, especially, they mentioned that there's a problem with when Rancho gets out. And then pedestrian access to Melrose and, and how that, I can't remember if that private drive had sidewalks or not, but that, that would be an issue. So, neighborhood concern about traffic.
I will also add traffic to the laundry list because it comes up with all of our other projects as well. Okay. Commissioner Looney?
One other item that we might consider adding to your list is grading. We've had a couple of applications in the past where there's been significant change in topography. And I think if we can isolate that, it might give us all a better understanding of what has been proposed.
You've got it. Commissioner Garrettson?
I don't know if we mentioned this, but did we talk about property management in terms of, is there going to be a property manager there? How, who's going to control this to prevent, you know, turning a three-floor condominium into four, three families? Okay.
That would typically be an issue that we would cover in the public hearing and add as a condition if you wanted to require some kind of management. We're trying to focus on the design issues that were covered tonight, but a comment's well taken and we'll make sure we address that in the conditions.
Did we catch them all? You're good with the comments?
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Morris, you're good with the comments? Good, okay. All right, I think we're done with that item. If there's any students, if you'd like to come up, we'll sign your papers and then we'll go back and finish our meeting. Commission staff discussion, council action, and reports.
So, we won't have a meeting at the end of this month for the holiday, obviously. We are scheduling our next meeting. Will likely be the second meeting in, in December, which will be December 15th. We'll likely have a couple of design review items. And because we only have one meeting that month, we may combine a public hearing with that, at that meeting as well, so we could get both.
Okay.
A couple of things went to council last week that are worth mentioning. The council approved a development agreement for the Sycamore Creek Mobile Home Park. It's right over here behind Rancho Buena Vista. It's a 13-acre property that the city purchased in 1990 for rent control purposes. And we moved all the mobile homeowners out in the early 2000s. And we've been working on a development deal. This will be our third shot at the title. But we did enter into an agreement with Monarch, who developed the apartment project down off Thibodeau that you can see from the freeway. They are a fairly high-end luxury developer, and so they're looking to build about 180 units on that property. And the city is also looking at putting a flood detention basin on that property to take the downtown area out of the flood zone. So, the combination of projects won't go together. They'll be separate, but Monarch's project will move forward in the next couple of months, hopefully under the DDA. The council also considered a request to purchase the property at 100 Main Street, which is the old G8 site, and exchange properties on Broadway where AlTura Payne and the King and Queen Hair Salon were located. That would involve the city building parking on the properties off Broadway in exchange for the development of the property at Main Street. There were a lot of questions about that and concerns about the costs involved. And so, the council put that one on hold and we're going to revisit it on December 8th. So, more to come on that. They also sold the property on 420 Lotto de Loma, which is the hillside that's up behind Mercantile, just south of Gwahomi. We looked at that project back in 2007 for a subdivision. It's never moved forward. The redevelopment agency took the property back from the developer, and so they're looking at doing a duplex type of development on that site. We'll see more on that. They also agreed to a new format for selecting planning commissioners, which will involve interviews of the commissioners in a public forum, probably at a council workshop, where all the council members will be able to ask questions of the incoming commissioners and then have a ballot voting system where they could all produce ballots of who they want to select. And they'd go through rounds until there was consensus on the selection. So, we'll change the process in which commissioners are reappointed or selected. And so, that will start in this next coming year for the June appointments of anyone that's going to be reappointed or a request to be seated on the commission. That was only for the planning commission. It wasn't for any of the other commissions, but it could affect other commissions in the future. And I believe that's about it.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. Mr. Conley, for the property at 100 Main Street, at the council meeting, I believe you described it as a mixed-use project with apartments. And I'm wondering whether there'd be any chance of changing that to condominiums.
So, the developer that's interested in buying it, does want to do a mixed-use project, round-floor retail with residential units above, he is asking for apartments. He hasn't indicated any desire to build condominiums. I think that's a little bit of a different market in terms of where that project's located and the kind of tenant that they're looking for. His perspective, and this is just based on correspondence I've had with him, is that the younger generation that's really visiting the downtown and bringing a lot of new energy to the downtown is who they're trying to focus on. That's not necessarily a buyer, it's more a renter. And so, they believe that an apartment project would better serve the demographic that's visiting the downtown and, and, you know, help us to continue to create a more vibrant downtown than a owner-occupied units would.
Would they be built to condo standards, i.e. washer-dryer type thing?
Our apartments stand, our multifamily standards apply to both apartments and condos. They do require washer-dryer hookups and amenities and.
Perfect. Commissioner Garrettson, you had a question?
Yes, concerning the interviews by the city council, did they indicate why this had come up?
It was brought forward initially by Councilmember Franklin in an effort to have the individual council members appoint their own commissioners. That was the initial request. And after a lot of conversation over two meetings, the consensus was, they wanted a more transparent, open, public process where they could all be involved in the interviews and selection. The way it works now, as you all know, interviewed by the mayor or maybe any other interested council members, and then the mayor makes an appointment and they vote on it. There was some, some concern from some of the other council members about not being involved in that interview process, not knowing who the appointees are before they vote on them. So, they wanted to have a process where they could all be involved because all of them would be together. It would have to be a public meeting, so that's why it would be interviews at a public meeting. We did survey several other cities in San Diego to see how they handled it. And there are many other cities that do it that way in a public forum.
Did they have any comments about the kind of thing they'd be looking for in order to appoint or reappoint somebody? Or just open?
Just open. There was no discussion on the types of qualities they'd be looking for in commissioner. It was more about the process of how they were appointing and selecting.
Unidentified, entered, robbed.
Commissioner Rossler, please.
John, concerning our two projects downtown that just, just got completed, the low-income projects, parking was a big concern. Have we had seen, had any parking concerns with the two projects?
Two affordable housing projects?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we have done a number of surveys of the parking as a result of the parking reductions that occurred on those projects. All indications are that there is adequate parking within the projects. However, I have heard some concerns from some of the surrounding neighborhoods because what's happened is both projects have adopted management plans where they've given stickers or permits to the people that park in the project. And so, they only get a limited number of those or they get assigned spaces. So, if you drive through the project at night, you'll see there are some open spaces and you think, oh, the parking's fine.
Right.
What's happening is, is the people that have additional cars that don't get permits or stickers for them end up parking them in the neighborhoods. And so, you have available spaces on site, but people are still forced to park in the neighborhood. So, we're trying to work through that with the management of both projects. We've really only heard concerns about the Paseo Point project, parking up off Ocean View. And I think that's been exacerbated by the construction down there. So, we're waiting till that project wraps up and then we're going to try to take a better stock of it.
When will the South Santa Fe project, uh, street project wrap up?
The street is supposed to open up by the end of December to through traffic in both directions, but all of the sidewalk landscaping improvements will probably be March, we're guessing, before it's completely wrapped up.
All right. And one final thing. The Barrosian Stone Yard that's off the freeway by Costco and the BMW, any complaints about their, their new lighting that, for the yard? It seems to me that, driving home on the freeway at night, that, that a good quantity of light is, is shining off-site?
I have not heard any complaints yet, but if you'd like to file a complaint, we can certainly look into it.
I don't know if I want to do that, but just a, a question.
Commissioner Fleming?
Thank you. Just in reference to our youth commissioners, there was a comment made to look for a place for them up here. But you, it's pretty crowded up here. But one thing that we have done in the past is they've, they have set right down front. I'm not encouraging to do that unless you want to. I mean, you're welcome to sit out there where you're at. But that's what some of our prior youth commissioners have done, is set right down here by the microphone so that at the end of a round of us, they would stand up and have their turn. I mean, they would, it'd be handy. So, that was all.
This is my pet peeve. I actually made requests when this place was designed to account for student commissioners, but as you can see, that did not get addressed. But the council is who this chambers was designed for. There's five people on the council plus, you know, a few extra seats for the staff. In our old building, we had four seats at the staff table instead of just two, so we could accommodate the commissioners down below. But unfortunately, because of the layout, it makes it pretty difficult to do. But we'll continue to look at options.
Yeah. And when we first moved here, we did have the student commissioners up here. And there was a reason they were, they couldn't sit here with us any longer.
Really too tight.
Yeah.
We're talking about the potential of changing this table around, but we'll see if that gets any traction.
Good. Mr. Stone, anything new? No? Any other comments, commissioners? Happy Thanksgiving. We are adjourned. Thank you.